It is six oh five. I'd like to call to order our Cultural Renaissance Foundation meeting for October twenty fifth. Roll call please.
Leah Birch.
Here.
Donna Turner.
Here.
Ms. Carla Bloxen.
Here.
Mr. Drew Bartlett.
Here.
Please note Ms. Caroline Shang-Chi Basha, Ms. Anne Fairfax, and Mr. Daniel Morgan are not present.
Our action item for today is the one-two-one-three Lake Avenue lease agreement with Path to College. Joan?
Sure. Well, that sound loud. I'm just going to give you all some background on it. I know some of the board members here haven't been with us as long as we've been working on this project. Twelve thirteen is a two-story building on Lake Avenue and it sat uninhabited and boarded up due to a fire for over fifteen years. And this mid-block building was really a dumping ground for garbage. It was never maintained. It was always boarded up. Between two thousand sixteen and two thousand eighteen, the CRA made several offers on the building. However, the owner at the time wanted in excess of five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the bond, which seems cheap now. But in two thousand nineteen, it didn't. So in two thousand nineteen, we were able to get an agreement with him to buy the building for three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which now seems like a total steal. And at the time, we weren't certain of what the use was. We just thought that if we bought the building and fixed it up, we'd already be doing our jobs, right? The original idea that we came up with was to partner with an organization that benefited youth in the area and also maybe to do some artist studios upstairs. But after meeting and talking to many different groups, including the Sheriff's Office, the PAL program, United Well, inner-city innovators, and some others, we kind of came to the understanding that, you know, we were going to have to be really specific on what we wanted to offer here and maybe putting artist space with children wasn't necessarily the best idea. So around the same time, staff and I met with some potential funders because, of course, the building is owned by the Cultural Renaissance Foundation, which is a nonprofit. And we told them kind of what our ideas were for the building. And they were absolutely sold on the idea of doing something for children in this particular area because it's much needed. So we were going to divide the space into two different nonprofits. However, the other nonprofit actually found free space in West Palm Beach and it actually suited them much better. I was really nervous that day because all I had was Path to College and I didn't think they wanted to take the whole building. But as usual, I was pleasantly surprised and they asked us if they could actually use the whole building and they would definitely fill the building and continue to do their great work there. So we have a lease that David Tulce's and one of his associates has written up. It's a ten-year lease that is renewable after another ten years. It is deed restricted for, I believe, fifty years to stay a building specifically for youth programs and mentoring. The CRA will not be charging rent and Path to College would be responsible for paying maintenance, utilities, security, and an interior build-out. So speaking about the interior build-out, Christina, as you all know, is an amazing woman and she already has an idea of how to build out the building with a grant from Palm Beach County. So we are very supportive of that. That needs to happen pretty quickly, which is why this kind of came to you rather quickly as well. So I'm going to ask the board tonight to please consider looking at the lease for Path to College. I know Christine will have a lot to say about specifically what they do there and you will all be amazed. And to please agree with the lease so we can move on and not only go after the grant from Palm Beach County but also bring some tenants into the building.
We need to have a motion before we have our discussion or can we just have our discussion?
We can do a motion and then a discussion.
I'd like a motion, please.
I don't have the language in front of me, so I'll do the grave sign. Glad to make a motion. Thank you. Thank you both of you. My mic is on. So I'd like to make a motion for the board to review the lease and the purchase option and to discuss the terms and approve a lease for the Path to College for the one-two-one-three building.
Please amend your motion to say that it's subject to approval of the CRA board attorney. Please include that in your motion.
Okay.
I wrote it. Sorry.
Thank you.
I was just reading the piece.
Okay. So I'm going to amend my motion to say and to include this language, "subject to approval by the CRA board attorney."
I apologize. I forgot something important. Excuse me. And that is, there is an opportunity for Path to College to purchase the building and that is in the lease and that would happen somewhere between now and in the first eight years. And staff is very supportive of it. We really don't need to be landlords. So anything they can do to purchase the building and maintain it and stay there as long as they can, we're supportive of.
Did anyone on the board have any questions or discussion?
The deed restriction would run with the land?
Yes.
I mean, even after the exercise of the purchase?
Mm-hmm.
Is the purchase price in the?
The purchase price that we're suggesting is the price that we paid for it.
Okay, that's in the lease as an option?
I'm sorry. I'll second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Now we have a second. Sorry.
Would you all like to hear from Christine?
Yes, please. Come on in.
Well, hello everyone. Like Joan said, my name is Christine Sylvain. I am the founder and CEO of Path to College. I'm also a long-term Lake Worth Beach resident and I'm very pleased to be here. I want to thank Joan for your vision and your work on bringing this to fruition today. I know there's a lot that goes into it. And so I want to thank you for bringing us here and also thank you all for taking your time to hear this special meeting. It means a lot. So a little background, Path to College is a nonprofit that helps students with challenges, students who don't have people at home that can guide them to college and career. And we provide them with mentors and actually we have a mentor in the room, a couple of our mentors in the room, and Amalia is actually one of our mentors too. And they're professionals in the community who dig in to walking that path to college with our students. And so that's the foundation that our work stands upon. And with that, we also do a leadership and career exploration development curriculum so that our students are turned into, are developed into candidates that amazing universities want to give full rides to. And that's really what makes us different than other youth development or other college prep programs. It's a long-term model. It's very holistic. We do everything from internship matching to college tours to tutoring and more. Our kids learn public speaking and so much more. But it's really founded on this concept that everybody needs one caring, consistent adult to show up for them. And that often our families, specifically in Lake Worth Beach, are stressed and really don't necessarily have time to do this work, to do the Googling that it takes to help a kid apply to college. It is daunting even for people of higher income. And so what we do is after we develop students and we teach them all about financial literacy and about how to have an interview and how to get an internship, we walk them through the college application process. We've done very well. A hundred percent of our graduates have been accepted into four-year schools, sixty percent without, with, with full-ride scholarships, and many of those going to top-tier universities. Amazing students from this town going off to Notre Dame, to UF, to Cornell. And I started this program, one, because I'm a mom. I have students in Lake Worth Beach schools. And two, because I was a teacher and I just saw so much potential going to waste. And so now we're in year seven and this is a real full-circle moment because our first education fest where our kids give competitive persuasive speeches was held in this room. And so here we are today asking you to approve a lease so that we can have our first brick and mortar where we'll have doors open every day after school to students to walk down from Lake Worth Beach or come from anywhere far and wide to get a caring and consistent adult to sit with them and talk to them about their personal path to college and career. We plan to do career aptitude tests with those kids, to hold industry days, to do project-based learning, to do regular tutoring, regular college prep. It is sorely needed in this community and many others. One statistic I'll point you to in our scope and proposal that we submitted is that in this city, ninety percent of students graduate. That is a real important goal for our school district. They very much so focus on graduation rates and we're proud of that. Unfortunately, only thirty-two percent of graduates have a post-graduation enrollment plan. So there is a huge chasm that our students in our community are falling into after graduation when they don't have a plan. We think we can move the number on that. We plan to be highly collaborative with some of our favorite partners here like Adopt a Family for the Children, Bridges, Guatemalan Mayan Center, Compass, and more. I know these people because I'm a resident here and they're my friends. But beyond that, everybody is devoted to the good of the youth of the community. So there's probably more to say, but I'm going to ask some of our students to come up because they came here today just to talk a little bit about what it means to be a part of Path to College. If you guys don't mind, Jalen, Anthony, and Manuel, if you stand up and give us thirty seconds of what is special to you about what we do.
You first.
Hi, my name is Jalen. I'm a student at Lake Worth High School currently. I just came from my band practice to talk to you guys about this because it's so important to us to have a place where we can come together and learn and push through our education. If you didn't know, last year, one of our students from Lake Worth High School got a full ride to Stanford University. That isn't something that happens every day. And there's no one else to, there's no one else that would have given us that opportunity to help us apply, to help us get to SAT scores, to help us build a resume except for Path to College. I honestly wouldn't. I didn't even know this place on the inside until Path to College introduced this to me. So I am very proud to say that Path to College has offered so many opportunities that otherwise us as low-income, first-generation students would never have. And I truly appreciate everything Path to College has done for me in the last three years.
Thank you, Jalen.
Hi, my name is Anthony. I'm also a student at Lake Worth High School and Path to College has given me the opportunity to be a student about applying to college because no one in my family, not even my parents or my relatives, have gone. And with this program, it has inspired me to reach that goal, to actually go. And then with my mentor, David Corey, he has pushed me to learn about different things and helped me out with the learning process that is college.
Thank you, Anthony. And Manuel, we have to celebrate you too. Are you going to tell us your good news?
Of course, yeah. Hi, my name is Manuel. And yeah, this Path to College is just a great opportunity for me. So before like enrolling into the program, I wasn't sure if going to college, right? I was just, should I do it? Should I? Should I not? But I want to go into the workforce after high school. But after this two years of being in the program, I'm ready for college. Maybe not like that much, but I am, I am like motivated into going to college and like having this great opportunity of earning more than say than my parents and like, yeah. And the great news is that I applied to Christ Bridge, this scholarship for full ride, and I'm a finalist.
Where are you going to interview soon?
Oh, I have an interview with one of the MIT alumni. So yeah, I'm sending emails to them right now to set up that meeting. And yeah, I'm grateful for the opportunity.
So we just, we believe that there's undeveloped potential here, that our students can go so far if we just give them the right opportunities. We have many more Ivy League quality candidates in our community. And our goal is not just that, but it's just to truly help a student self-actualize and bring them into a community of support around them where they know that no matter what, someone has their back. And we've seen students have so many challenges continue on their path to college, even when a parent dies, even when they're being moved from house to house, and so much more. So we know our students, we love them dearly, and we believe in their greatest potential. And we think that aside from our flagship program, we'll be able to help thousands of kids in this community just by having open doors. So I think it's an exciting day and I'm really excited that you guys get to be a part of it as well. And I just also want to thank some of our partners for being in the room. We have extraordinary charity CEO Christine Raymond here and Corey Murphy, who is from Community Foundation, and they're wonderful friends and supporters and funders of ours as well. So any questions?
I've got a question. So this is very inspiring, so very exciting. I was wondering, so how, we'd love to have a tenant that is there for ten years or twenty even, just doing great things for the community. So how is it funded and how's, what's the sustainability of the program?
Oh, great. So the budget that we submitted, and I don't know if it's in the packet, it's for the tenant improvements, but we're actually launching a capital campaign to not only fund the project, to do the tenant improvements and get our offices and everything ready, but also to start a program endowment so that we don't have to worry about, you know, chasing, chasing around money for, you know, AC improvements and the like. So that's one part of it, but certainly we have multi-year grants with partners for our programs. We have a development director. We have an active board. We have regular fundraising initiatives, a gala, January twentieth. You are all invited to come to our gala, January twentieth, to help support everything raised at that.
Give us those invites.
Yeah. Everything raised at that gala will go towards launching this center that we hope to do as soon as possible. So I will also just note, you all have an annual report on your desk in front of you. As part of our mission to develop top-tier candidates, we walk it like we talk it. We ask businesses to take our students as interns and teach them something. And so we host our own internship every summer where we have students design and write and publish this annual report. So this is student work that you're looking at that they can then use in their portfolio while applying.
Very impressive.
It is.
Did we have any more board questions or comments?
How do you select the students or is it really open door and?
Oh, great question. Well, first and foremost, we focus on zip code and we use the Children's Services Council's zip code report and we look at fact- And we look at factors that revolve around education, like pre-kindergarten readiness, third-grade reading scores, and graduation rates. And by zip code, if those three are in the red, we know it's an area where the path to college is in danger. And so, we focus on Lake Worth, Boynton Beach, and like the northwest, West Palm through Riviera Beach area. And then, in those areas, any student who lives there or goes to school there is eligible. Then we go into the schools, and we give presentations, title on schools. The students have to prove that they have low-income status, because that's our only, like, true requirement. But, you know, this is like trade secrets right now, but here they come. We look for students who want to do good and go far. We have a scoring matrix that includes asking them about, how do you want to improve your community? What are some challenges that you've overcome? And, you know, if you were successful, what would you do? And we're just looking for those kids that have that special something in them, that they're willing to work hard. So, that's for our flagship program. And then those, we also interview them, and we're asking them questions like, do you have anybody to help you outside of school? And if the answer is no, they move to the top of the list. For our outreach program, and this would really be a part of our outreach program, there's no requirement. You know, it's open doors. We're here to help.
Thank you.
I have a question. And this may be in here, and sorry, I don't have the packet in front of me, so if I'm being, asking something that I should have known about.
No, it's fine.
I just kind of flew in from Guatemala, where I was doing similar stuff, trying to help kids who don't have education, who don't have jobs, and figure out what to do. Anyway, my question is this, like, are you tracking what happens to students after they come out of this program? And what are they doing for jobs? And what sectors are they in? Do you have that? Is it...
We don't, so we haven't gotten that deep into tracking, like, where they wind up in jobs. We do, as part of our strategic plan, have the goal set to do an alumni program, where we do engagement, we do kind of networking amongst them, and try to match them with internships. We'd like to do a summer program for our graduates. We're just not there yet. Having a brick and mortar will help us get there, though, long-term.
That sounds great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
It's really inspiring.
Do we have anyone else who would like to have a public comment? Comment down.
Brent Woodfield, 133 Duke Drive. So, I just want to say, I think this is a perfect partnership. You know, some of you may know, I used to be a board member for the CRA. I've seen firsthand how the CRA not only does a great job of helping with the economic potential of the city, but really, kind of goes outside what I think the normal scope of what CRA does, and invest in the community in a broader context with affordable housing, what you see here with art, with different kind of community connections. I've been a neighbor of Christine's for a long time. I've been on different committees with Christine. I've watched Path to College really grow over probably the last eight or ten years that I've known her, sorry, seven years that I've known her and watched it. And it really is inspiring to see what she's done, and seeing this match up so neatly, I think it is something I wanted to express to you guys. So, she's based in Lake Worth, it's focused in Lake Worth. She helps kids all over the community, but students of Lake Worth High School really get a lot of benefit out of it. So, I think the location is perfect, the investment is perfect, and I really think it's a good match. Not only, she spoke a lot about what opportunities she's given with students, but I know I've seen her kind of working on the program, working as a leader of a nonprofit, working with other nonprofit leaders in the community. And I know that she's got kind of the skill set that it takes to make sure this thing takes off and thrives. I've seen some other nonprofits that I know, they don't have that leadership, they don't have this, and honestly, connections in the community. I'll brag on Christine, she's connected at the United Way, she's connected with Leadership Palm Beach County, Leadership Florida. I'm sure, as you can see, the partners she has here, from community partnerships, and she's working with the county with grants. And when she's trying to figure out how to get that grant from the county, she's pinging ideas off of Mac Bernard, who's on the county commission. So, those are the kind of relationships that people that can see what these ideas have, and she has that. So, anyway, I won't take too much more of your time, but I think this is a great idea, a great partnership, and it's gonna succeed in a way that'll be great for the community and be another notch of success for the CRA, an example of something the CRA's done to really build Lake Worth Beach up, so.
Thank you. Does we have anyone else that'd like to speak?
My name is Lisa Postkansar, 1821, North J Terrace, Lake Worth Beach, Florida. I was also a kindergarten teacher, second grade, and media specialist at North Grade K8, from 2011 until this past August. And I've known Christine since her eldest child came and hugged me, as a kindergartner. And we're all dealing with her being in high school now. And I've watched that building for the twenty-six years I've lived in Lake Worth, and I've always wondered what's gonna happen with it. And I cannot think of a better thing to happen with it. In addition to everything else, I'm also a mentor with Path to College. And the program, the flagship program that Christine speaks of, is an important thing, I think, that we bring to Lake Worth as a community. I think we, that it is a premier mentoring program in the county, as evidenced that the United Way uses Christine and her staff at many of their mentoring events. And having that kind of community involvement here in Lake Worth Beach, I think speaks to who we are as a community. So, that's it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Cory Murphy, Community Foundations for Palm Beach and Marietta Hills. There's so much I could say about them. It's just absolutely amazing to see an organization that's seven years old navigate the terrain that it has to get to this point. I mean, you have beautiful people here, and, you know, we describe families and young people in the community, especially the ones, Path to College serves as low-income, or whatever. But they're people, and they're beautiful people, and they have the means to do whatever it is they want in life. And so, when you think about the leadership of Christine, and think about the path that her organization has taken, how do we alleviate the burden on her to worry about where we're gonna be, how we're gonna fundraise to get the bills paid? Let's just do it with what we already have. And so, as a foundation that supports a bunch of different programs, this is one we've supported since 2020, and it's one we'll continue to support. And so, this is an unequivocal, yes, this is an easy decision to make. Let's just get it done. But, thank you.
Good evening. My name's Christine Raymond, and I'm the Executive Director of Extraordinary Charities here in West Palm Beach. And what we do as an organization is support the work of great nonprofits across Palm Beach County. Christine and I are also leadership classmates, and I want to speak to the kind of partner that Path to College is, to not only their students, but other organizations. You know, as a nonprofit leader, we have so many demands on our time, yet Christine, and then the students, and the mentors, and the staff of Path to College are always there to lend support to us. And that's the kind of partner that I know that they will be in this community. I had the opportunity to serve on a speed interview panel last year for their students, and I have to tell you, I talk about that event as the best volunteer opportunity I've ever had as a nonprofit leader. These kids are amazing. And I just, I'm so excited, and it's like, I'm trying not to cry. It's just, I love what they do, and I love the way that they do it. They will be excellent partners to the city of Lake Worth Beach. I myself am a Lake Worth Beach resident. I have nephews in Lake Worth Beach High Schools, and I am thrilled at the possibility of something like this being part of who we are as Lake Worth Beach. So, I thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. Does the board have further discussion, or are we ready to...?
I've got, so, on the lease, Joan?
Yeah.
Is there a provision, a lease, that requires that Christine not leave the organization?
It's in small print, really small print.
So, is there like, but on this more serious, is there like, I don't know, the lease gets signed after the meeting. Is there like a timeframe to move in and start and occupy? When do we start seeing the building come to life?
Well... We're still working on the building. So, there's, there's still a few more things to be done to bring it up to code and get a CO for it. I believe in the meantime, you know, Christine has, like I said before, has applied for a grant from the county to build out and to bring in computers and furniture and all that other good stuff. So, I'm hoping that maybe over the next few months. Is that too short?
I think you do, don't you?
So, I heard months?
Yes.
Okay.
Early next year.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks.
I just had a, had a point, and maybe it's like, maybe I'll turn to you, Joan, just to say, you know, I see Madeline up there. She was friend, I didn't get to know her for so many years, but just wanted to kind of give a kind of dedication, or if you could, because she was on the board and...
Yeah, absolutely. Her picture is here, because this was, early on, she was one of the big supporters of this, and unfortunately, she passed away. But we are gonna have a special plaque at the building, specifically for her and her memory.
Thanks, Joan.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I have a very brief editorial note. Paragraph 21, there's a placeholder that probably needs to come out.
If you understand, this isn't the final final?
Perfect.
And it's with the attorney. What paragraphs?
Uh, 21.
I'll be sure to pass that along.
Yeah, thank you. Pedantic.
We have a motion and a discussion and a second.
Time for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? Okay, pass and man is whistling. And thank you all for coming. We're going to adjourn this meeting and start our regular CRA meeting, but you're more than welcome to stay.
Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Don't move.
It is 6:43. I'm going to call to order the Lake Worth Beach Community Redevelopment Agency's special meeting for Wednesday, October 25th. Roll call please.
Mr. Daniel Morgan.
Here.
Mr. Drew Lartman.
Here.
Ms. Donna Turner.
Here.
Ms. Leah Hertz.
Here.
Ms. Carla Loxton.
Here.
Ms. Caroline Shanti Basia. And Ms. Anne Farquhar not present.
Okay, can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll just keep spinning around till we see it.
Something like that.
We're here for the pro housing grant?
Yes, so, uh, thank you. So this is actually a mandatory meeting for us to apply for this grant called pro housing. Um, it was, uh, listed by HUD, I believe the end of September, and they gave us a month to kind of put everything together. So it's been kind of a, a little bit of a crazy place around here lately between this and, uh, Day of the Dead. But luckily we do have the majority of it done, um, and we plan to hand it in on the end of, the end of this week. Um, we'd had 15 days for, um, people to make public comment. We got a, a little bit of public comment and then every, anything that is said tonight will also be sent in as public comment for this particular grant. The grant would not allow us to apply by ourselves. Um, it was for multi-jurisdictional agencies or for much larger agencies than we are. So at a housing, uh, conference that I went to, um, Anita Jenkins came up to me from Riviera Beach and asked if we would be willing to partner with her. And I said, yes, of course. So the grant is actually, uh, for the Riviera Beach CRA and the Lake Worth CRA will be partnering. Uh, the CRA will be the lead only because we have experience with HUD grants before. And it's a total that we're asking of $10 million, which is the maximum that you can ask for. And, uh, specifically the money is not only for the production of affordable homes, uh, but it's also to keep people in their homes if they, you know, obviously bills, you know, go up and insurance goes up and, uh, you know, everything else goes up. So we want to try to keep people in their homes as, as much as we possibly can so people are not, you know, forced out of their homes. Um, and then there's also a couple other, uh, components to it that are, are quite unique. Um, they do allow you to spend money on infrastructure if it's in support of affordable housing, which I think is really great. So maybe we can do, if there's an area, let's just say, uh, in the redevelopment area down the street that floods really badly, we're allowed to fix that. If there was a new housing project that came along and it was, let's say, seven stories and our, uh, utilities can't handle that, um, we would be able to spend money on that. Um, and there's also, uh, some money for actual planning work that goes into things like, uh, climate change and, um, racial equality and, um, some other things that, you know, are really important to us here in Lake Worth. So that kind of like touches on a lot of different things that we need. I have, um, both with me and on, uh, our website is a full, um, draft of the grant. Uh, we were able to also get, um, gosh, I don't even know how many, um, letters of support, but it's probably in the 50s. Um, so we're very proud of that. We also have memorandums of understanding with all of our original, uh, NSP partners. That includes Adopt a Family, Community Land Trust, Community Partners, Habitat for Humanity, Housing Leadership, uh, Palm Beach County, they're also supporter of us. Um, they're not, they are not applying. And Neighborhood Renaissance and of course the city of Lake Worth and the city of Riviera Beach. So tonight, uh, any comments that you have regarding the grant, uh, will be written and sent in along with all of our grant applications and forms. So, um, that's all I have unless you have specific questions.
The, um, before we make a motion or, or we're just going to do our comments, so we won't have to make a motion?
Correct.
Okay. Does anyone have any comments? Do they have any questions after looking through it?
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. The, the city is a partner as well?
Yes.
It's the, the city of Lake Worth Beach, CRA Lake Worth Beach and CRA Riviera Beach or Riviera?
No, so the city of Riviera Beach is a supporter and the Lake Worth Beach city is a supporter, but they're not collaborators.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so the money has to be spent within the CRA of either Lake Worth or Riviera Beach.
Gotcha. One of my concerns, and I think it's one of the first bullet points, um, when it's describing like the goals of the, of the pro program, um, is overcoming, um, zoning that prevents, you know, uh, multifamily housing, for example. I s- I, I, I find it hard when I'm, when you're looking at the map to see where we're going to find those opportunities to do like infill if we're being restricted by, by zoning, right? So the city, um, I don't know if as a body we could come to a conclusion and understanding or, or, or be able to tell the city that we really need to take a look at the, the zoning policy, um, around the CRA district in a whole, in, in, to, to better improve this, um, the outcome of, um, of this, of this funding if we, if we're so lucky to get it. Because, um, the way it looks now, it's probably going to be a lot of the, the same old things that we've been doing is, uh, supporting single-family housing, um, single-family homeowners and, uh, probably subsidizing, I don't know how many other pockets of, in the CRA district, there are empty lots we have that could support significant amounts of housing, right? But, um, yeah, I think, I think i- i- in order to, to achieve the goal of really breaking down the barriers to affordable housing, we as a body should tell the city that they need to look at their zoning. And, and make it so that multifamily housing can be built and, um, without any issues, at least in the CRA district.
Yeah, that's actually one of the activities we put, I want to say a hundred thousand, but I'm not absolutely positive about that, about taking a look at our land use and zoning and also ADUs, um, to try to, you know, have more infill versus, you know, building new seven-story buildings, although you can do that now, so.
Yeah, because of the new, the new laws, right?
Live local, yeah.
Yeah, and, um, you know, it'd be great if we could have consensus because ADUs are a hot topic or were a hot topic a couple of years ago. But, you know, um, from, from my understanding, my own research, you know, the, it's going to be very hard to, 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 you know, because even at $10 million, right, $10 million, $10 million sounds like a lot of money. But in reality, when you're talking about housing.
Yeah.
Um, it's not a lot. And so I think we can get a lot if we, if, if the zoning changed in, in a lot of parts of the city. But at least we can start in the CRA district.
And I just wanted to add, um, we also, uh, have leverage from many of our partners. So I think we ended up with, I want to say about 15 million in leverage. So, um, you know, that helps bring that 10 a little higher. Um, and Riviera Beach has their own leverage as well. So we'll be working with partners who will bring some money to the table.
One last question, and what's, what's the split, right? Because there has to be a split between cities, right? Proportion, I mean Riviera much larger. I'm guessing their district is much larger too than.
It's 50/50.
50/50 for the, for the grant.
And neither of us are taking any admin money. We're putting it all into the, into the housing.
Awesome.
Anyone else?
Well, I, I want to follow up. Um, so getting, the question of getting the, getting the grant versus not getting the grant, getting the grant helps us with the, with the discussion on zoning and.
I mean, it wouldn't, if I was in their spot, I'd be more incentivized to, to actively talk about upzoning or, or allowing for ADUs, um, in certain parts of the city. You know, it's campaign season, people feel certain ways about housing, um, homeowners feel a certain way about single-family zoning. Um, but again, you know, we're in a housing crisis. The, the city itself declared a housing crisis. I know it's felt definitely amongst the residents.
Sure.
But, um, I would hope that something like this, they would, they would take that step, you know what I mean? They would lend themselves to the idea of, of changing the zoning.
All right. I would take this down a path because I'm very curious about this, um, but, uh, because I live in, in the CRA district and I'm zone multifamily. Is there places in the CRA district that are not zoned multifamily?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
You live li- right off Lake Inlucern?
Yeah.
Right off of it?
Yeah.
Yeah, usually that's, that's a little pocket.
Right.
But you know, going further in.
Yeah.
Where every, everything's a neighbor, you know, single-family housing, that's where.
Right.
You would, you would need to change the zoning.
Shortly after me, right. Okay.
I have a question. Joan, and again, sorry if I didn't get a chance to go through this all. Um, I'm still in Guatemala in my, in my hands. But, um, and my follow-up just, just gotten back, but could you say a little bit more? I did read through about half of it and I was looking at, you know, kind of the age of the housing stock that we have. We know like, you know, it goes from like 67% over 80 years to like what, down to like 37%? But could you say a little bit more like about two things? One is how, how would this grant enable some remedy for that? And also like with more, uh, people coming into the city, which is also predicted and we know our utilities and our, that's one issue, the price, but it's also the infrastructure itself. So in terms of balance, how do you see this, this funding going? And also roads, I know that would be, would be really advantageous because this what, $40 million bond that we had only covered it so much.
Right. Yeah, I mean honestly, there's, there's a lot more infrastructure that needs to be done that, um, we could even go touch. Um, and as, uh, as, and, uh, you know, there's, um, it's only $10 million. Really it's only five if we come down to it. Although we do have, like I said, we do have some leverage. I think, um, you know, it's going to be a conversation with the city on, on multiple levels, not just on, I know, taking a look at land use and zoning, but also taking a look at our infrastructure and taking into account, you know, climate change and, um, you know. A great, it's great to have more buildings, uh, in order to house people, but at the same time you're getting rid of green space. That's also very important as well. And, um, I believe we put some money aside for that too, to try to bring more things to the neighborhoods, um, besides just housing because, um, you know, it'd be great to have some parks or some walking, you know, paths or, or some other things in the neighborhood that maybe some of the neighborhoods don't already have.
This would also build so much more like not just the infrastructure, but really build social cohesion.
Yeah.
And having green spaces and it builds trust.
Right, we want to build neighborhoods. We don't just want to build housing, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Um, and Lake Worth is a great place, I think, where, where that you can see that, that's one of our greatest attributes, I think, is the communities that we have. But yeah, I think a lot of it is going to, you know, the city is doing a lot as far as the infrastructure, especially, um, if you saw the letter in there from the, the water utility department, they're doing, uh, a lot of projects, but you know, we still have the electric utility to deal with, um, which can be, um, significant. Um, there's also, you know, things like what about undergrounding the utility lines? You know, I mean, we talk about it and we hear that it's too expensive to do, but at the same time, how long are we really going to be able to keep our electric utility lines above ground with all the storms?
Winning ones could back a whole, I don't know how many neighborhoods.
Yeah, and, and also, you know, our, um, you know, we're trying to have people understand that, you know, um, overcrowding is definitely an issue, but, um, it's, it's something that, um, we have to be, we have to be aware of, but yet we also have to have a remedy for it before we start enforcing things. And so I think there's probably, you know, some, some smaller, uh, units that need to be built in multifamily. Um, obviously more multifamily units and trying to build them in a way that cuts people's costs as much as, absolutely, you know, as much as we can. So the better that it's, you know, insulated, the better that, you know, the windows are in, a good door, things like, all those things make a really big difference. And so there's a component of this grant, whi- which we're just going to focus on keeping people in the homes that they have and making sure that we retrofit them so that they can stay there.
Great, thank you.
I want any questions, but we write a comment whenever we get there.
Okay.
I'm, I had a couple of things that I, I wanted to add. Um, this grant was put out by HUD and it's patterned after the CDBG grants. And so it looks at a lot of things that we normally won't, aren't normally aren't able to do. And so when they, when they talk about, uh, removing disparities, removing, uh, desegregation, removing, uh, access for people to stay in their homes, other grants usually are more defined. And so this grant, it, it's almost saying, bring us your ideas. And, and that's what we're going to be saying to the city. These are the ideas to improve the city and we'd like you to get on board. And we have some money and we have some leverage. So I think so gives us an opportunity that we don't normally have. I, um, am saddened that it's only going to be in the CRA district, but that's a total discussion for another day. Right now, this is what we have and this is what we're able to do and I support it 100%. Um, I did have a question though. Will we be working with the city of, uh, the CRA for Riviera Beach in housing policies such as to collaborate on common issues such as land use decisions, um, improving housing strategy, housing pos- uh, policy, ADUs, you know, will you two meet together to reform maybe issues that you can partner with and then you're not duplicating the work?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we talked with them, um, at length and it, it, it really is, uh, interesting how similar we are. Um, maybe not all the demographics, but definitely when it comes to income, yeah, absolutely. When it comes to, you know, poor infrastructure, yes, absolutely. When it comes to, um, you know, people from different countries moving there, yes, absolutely. So there's actually a lot of things that we do have in common and we went through, I want to say maybe there was a list of like 50 different things that we could do and we picked out the seven that we both had in common and that's where we put the money. So yes, we will be working together. I mean, obviously they'll have some things that are different, you know, for their city and things they're willing to do that we're not or, or vice versa. But I think a lot of the same issues, uh, you know, are pervasive in both areas.
And I, I did notice that, uh, Riviera Beach, in one of the programs that they had, they had already started giving money to people to, uh, take care of self, safety issues and, and take care of housing issues. And it was so, they had different ideas of, of tackling the same problem. So we will be able to learn from each other and hopefully the city of Lake Worth Beach will commit more money to keeping people in their homes. Also, uh, having money for down payments, having money to help people assist in the gap. Many people say that they want a home, but they don't have the money to get there. This program also has an arm to do that. So it has a lot of things that we need in our city and I think that it would be an excellent program for us, an excellent beginning. And I hope that, uh, they will give us the $10 million. That's my comment.
Underline, underline.
Yes, we need that money. But, um, any other comments that'll be included, uh, in the grant application?
I have one. So, um, depending on how, um, aggressive we get, you know, so let's say we get the funds, right, and we have 5 million. And, and there's a lot of ideas to do a lot of different things. Does it allow us to hire someone to help us with all the things we will, we will want to achieve?
Um, and to be really honest, we didn't put any money for consultants in. Um, but my feeling would be that we have other places we could probably find money for a consultant. Um, like I said, 5 million doesn't go a long way when we're talking about real estate. So, yeah, potentially we have other funding where we could bring in somebody if we needed to.
Okay, all right.
Any other comments?
Sure. Um, so basically I come down to looking at what was done with the previous HUD grant and the difference it made in the communities. And I understand wanting to focus on multifamily and I'm with you on that. I, I would love to see more multifamily. But driving around the neighborhoods, you can see the places where we deployed and improved and constructed single-family homes. And not only is that house improved, but the neighborhood around it has improved. And you can see the impact of this money. And you can see the impact of this money that was spent. When did we spend the last of that? Five years ago? Three years ago?
No, it was more than that.
I thought it says twenty-ten to twenty-thirteen. In any event, that infusion of cash to the city had a huge impact. And I recognize this isn't quite as much, but maybe leveraged with the power that you've been able to leverage, that impact will go a much broader way. And it seems like this money can be deployed in a lot more flexible way than our previous grant, so that's very cool. And I have to commend you and the staff on how quickly you've moved on this and gathering the MOUs and gathering the letters of support. I mean, this was a very quick turnaround and I hope that speaks to our ability to handle these funds and is in support of our application.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind the board that we also have two community project funding grants. So we have the one from Representative Frankel that we got two years ago. We're actually, Chris is working on the environmental and once we get that done, that's five hundred thousand dollars. Then we have another one from Representative Frankel for last year, that's for seven hundred and fifty. So this, you know, hopefully we'll get this and we'll have a little more than, you know, six million to try to make an impact.
And the money from the city?
And the money from the city, thank you. Almost forgot. How could I forget two million dollars?
It's rolling in the dough.
So I'll go ahead and, so I just want to voice that my support for this grant application. I think, you know, living in Palm Beach County is nothing that jumps to the forefront than the cost of living in Palm Beach County. And so the more that we can do to help with affordable housing, I think the better. And, you know, chasing grants like this, trying to bring it back to the communities to create some affordable housing in these two communities, Riviera Beach and Lake Worth Beach is very necessary. So I think it's something we absolutely need to bring, to put this application in. I do commend the staff for putting such a good application together with a lot of support. As a former grant reviewer myself, when you see a lot of the community rally around a grant application, it gives you a lot more confidence in, you know, awarding it. So putting together a good grant application is a really hard job, but from what I've heard, you know, good job on getting that done. But it's very necessary and so thanks for putting the work in to collaborate with Riviera Beach CRA and get it done.
I think that concludes our comments. Now, do we need to make a motion to say, or we're just going to give the comments and they'll go on the record?
Yep.
And they'll be included in the application?
Correct.
Okay. So if anyone has, no one else has any comments, we can do board member comments. Do we have any board member comments so we can quickly move to adjournment?
Not about the grant?
Nope. Now we're on board member comments.
So I have an idea. So we met twice this month, so if there's nothing on the agenda for November, could we take a break? I have selfish reasons because I'm not here, I'm in D.C.
Come on, man, you just came back.
I know, exactly. So, but anyway, if that, I just throw that on the table. You don't have to make the decision today, but just as the meeting approaches.
I think Joan looks at it every month as to what she has and if she can avoid having a meeting, that's fine, you know? But she'll let us know.
Yeah, I don't have anything yet for the meeting, but we'll see.
That's right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Definitely have the meeting if we need to make decisions.
Any other board member comments?
Only thanks for the inspirational, you know, agenda, it's not this meeting, it's the previous meeting, so I'll stop talking, bye.
And everybody's going to be here for Day of the Dead, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, this Saturday, three to nine?
Yep. Look forward to it, looks great.
Okay, any other board member comments? No? Okay, we're now to adjournment. Do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Can I have a second?
Second.
We're so adjourned.
Thank you.